Yeah, we're there.
Doesn't get you any more money, does it?
No.
I call this meeting of the Perryton Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members aren't present. This meeting has been duly called. Notice this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Urban Code, Chapter 551. Would you all pray with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the many, many blessings that you've laid before us. We thank you for the opportunity to live in this community. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. Help us and all the decisions that we make be within your will for us. Help us to be able to see others in need, to see others that need our prayers and need our grace. Be with the Glass family in their time of struggle. Be with this community as we've gone through yet another tragedy. In thy heavenly name we pray. Do we have anyone for open forum? We'll move directly into reports and start with the superintendent's report. Mr. Brown?
I do want to recognize... There we go. I do want to recognize a couple sets of students before you guys and just to let you know. I'll start with our welding team. We have some outstanding student welders. I know that many of you attended the football game last Friday night where our welders built the Hall of Fame board that is now displayed at our football stadium. And we were able to inaugurate our first member into the Hall of Fame last Friday. Many of the students that served in designing and building that board also are part of a build team that is now going to state. They competed in a competition and qualified for state, and I would like to recognize them by name so that you guys know who they are. Many of them are the same as recognized on Friday night. Omar Granados, Leo Gutierrez, Kevin Miramontes, Joel Alvarez, Mason Carranza, Jesús Jimenez, Anthony Magallanes, and Liam Drum. These are the students who will be going to state for state build competition. I don't have the date on that, but I'll try and get you guys that so that you can watch their progress. Also, speaking of people who are advancing, do want to let you guys know that our band over the weekend on Saturday received a overall first division for their marching performance and for the second year in a row is advancing to the area level. I can say when listening to them on Friday night, our band has done an outstanding job. Their sound is good, their marching is good, their balance is good. And so I'm very, very proud of them for the second year in a row advancing to the area level. So we'll be getting to cheer them on as they go to the next step. And I believe, I'm not sure if this is a state year or not, if they move it past area, I think I'd find out if this is a state year. They kind of go back and forth on the years. But I'm proud of our band for doing that. And Mr. Gonzalez has done a great job of preparing them for those competitions. In other news, we do have our Vader election going on. Today was the first day of early voting.
Can I cut in?
Yes, please.
At lunch, I went to vote. So y'all vote early, vote often? There was a line at the courthouse to be able to vote. So that was exceedingly impressive to see. I could not get in to vote because every booth was full inside people voting. So it's, we live in an amazing community.
Yes, we do.
Very, very active and very, very supportive of things going on.
Yes, we do. And so on that note, I would encourage everybody, both here and watching us online, to vote. I do want to remind everyone that the proposition that school has on the agenda is not a tax increase, even though the wording may say that or may sound like a tax increase. It is not a tax increase. The tax rate for the school will be a dollar and two, no matter if the Proposition 8 passes or it fails. But if it does pass, we will generate an extra million dollars that we can use for staff raises and for purchasing buses. So again, I just want to encourage everybody to vote and to, I guess that's as far as I can encourage. But other people can specifically encourage.
I will encourage people to go look at the Herald and look at my editorial. Because it tells you exactly the way I feel, that this is something that we have needed to do as a district and we're able to do now. For those that haven't had a chance to read it, Quick Readers Digest condensed version, I guess is this the time that I can actually say that to not get in trouble from Fred? That through the way state school finance works, by taking three cents off of our INS and adding it to our maintenance and operations, they actually pay two to one on those particular pennies that come through. The increase that you see on the ballot language is the amount that maintenance operation and operations will increase specifically because of the tax increase. Does not include the state's input into that. So it's an ability for this community to not change anyone's tax rate. Notice, keep talking about tax rate. Property values are not within our ability to control, but the tax rate stays at a dollar and two cents, no matter how you vote. But if you vote for this, it allows the district to do some things. If you've seen any of the material on the school's website, that talks about where we rank within our area, we are in 15th and 16th out of 16 on the, in the area on teacher salaries. We're able to get ourselves to the middle. And so at least let us get ourselves to the middle. And I would encourage everyone to vote, vote once. Vote for Proposition 8. Go read the sign in my yard.
Yep. And yes. Let's see, in other news, we'll be talking more about construction later on, but we are continuing our construction at Wright. We have finished an area and students are now using those areas. And I've heard lots of good things, lots of excitement from some of the other teachers when they see what the rooms are going to look like. And so there's lots of excitement about getting through this project. They've started down another hall to update a lot of the classrooms. So we are, and they're taking a bigger bite of that. And hopefully we'll finish maybe a little bit sooner, or at least have more classrooms that we can move back into in this phase. The high school is just about done with their planning and we should be starting on the high school very soon. We'll be talking more about that later. I have one resignation to report to you, and you guys are already aware of. Laura Jumper has resigned. We have elected to, we rebalanced the classrooms and are not hiring again for her position. And we're still in pretty good shape in second grade as far as numbers go. So that finishes my report. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. President?
Thank you very much. Tasby Conference was two or three weeks ago. Sarah and Donna have a report. What all wonderfulness she learned at the Tasby Conference. We appear to have a handout.
It's fine. There's several handouts, because y'all can read them and I try to keep it short. It's kind of going to be a showdown, and it's obvious the school districts know that the legislature is pushing, a lot of the legislative agenda is pushing the vouchers or savings accounts or whatever they want to do. So it was a lot of their numbers, state numbers versus, say, raise your hand, Texas numbers. But because of all that turmoil and uncertainty and frustration over the testing, star testing, the accountability ratings, all those things, it seems like for the delegate assembly, after the grassroots meetings, the Legislative Advisory Council got together and really streamlined what they wanted to do and everybody really kind of stayed on task. It was supposedly the shortest delegate assembly anyone has seen in forever. There were very few amendments, very few arguments, a few people tried to get down in the woods, and people stood up and said, no, we need to say very clearly to the legislative representatives what we want done. And it needs to be straightforward and make sense. So mostly it was about funding, vouchers, enrollment, increasing basic allotments, since that has not changed since 2019. And for those that don't know what a basic allotment is, you get this much per student. And most of what the state has done since then in their funding and helping schools are things that you have to apply for a one-time grant, or it's very specified, you can only use it for doors, or for security, or this type, or this type of teacher raise. And so it's not giving that flexibility and local control to the school boards to get, here is your budget, where should it go? And so there's a lot of fight over that. I think everybody's pretty, we're agreeing for now. So it's not liberal versus conservative for the students right now. Everybody seems to be about on the same team. It seems a lot more simplified. They focused a lot on investing in students, enrollment-based funding this year. We've been pushing that for a long time, and I think we all really should, because it just makes more sense. And that state requirements are completely funded. There was a lot of frustration about that. But again, we're just asking for what we want, and hopefully you can talk to your representatives and talk them into those kinds of things. And then empowering local communities, there's been a lot of frustration that you've just been taking what they've been saying and not really getting about, getting around our districts like they're set up to be. There is a little more emphasis on student behavior and local control on that. And even TEA is admitting that the special education is vastly underfunded by the federal government, and it is not funded properly for their students that have a lot higher needs and are a lot more expensive. Like a six-figure student gets the same amount of, a student that costs about six figures to educate, we get the same dollars for that child that we do someone that just needs a little bit of reading help that may be dyslexic. And that just is not equitable, it is not functional, it needs rehashed. So at least TEA and Tasby and everybody seemed on the same page on that. So I'm hopeful that might happen. Can you read through various things? I sent y'all an email of what the, you don't get it in November, the Tasby advocacy agenda, cornerstone principles are. The main thing, we're mostly school finance. Everybody is passing deficit budgets. I'm very grateful our local staff have figured out how not to do that, and I'm very proud of them. And part of that in taking care of our students and teachers is part of the Vader, that they have figured how to put together. And now we need the voters to pass because we don't have another way to increase our budget other than more students. Or a few of the special projects they have. So the main fight, I just gave you all these slides. TEA likes to tell us and tell your legislative representatives that we have about 15,000 per student. And then I showed these numbers to Brittany, and she said, actually for us, that's closer to 10,800. So there's a lot of figures lie and liar's figure going on. But I think there's a lot of education that needs to occur locally and with even some of our not-so-local representatives showing them actually what the true story is, because they just get this report and go, okay. That just like floored me. I called Brittany right after, I was like, do we really? How do they get $15,000 per student? There's just no way. So raise your hand, Texas came back in a session I really liked about where do they think these dollars are coming from? There's those slides there. But the interesting fact is inflation-adjusted funding is down $9.8 billion for state, for education funding, when compared 2019 to 2020 and 2020 to this school year. So almost $10 billion short, but they think they're funding us fine. And Texas ranks, depending on how you look at it, 46th out of 50 states in national average in student spending. But we're the fourth-largest economy in the world. Fifth, fourth, fifth. And something that everyone is fighting with is the lack of certified teachers. We're not the only ones struggling. That's something that's been a burr in everybody's saddle and just really hard to overcome. And it turns out that nearly 34% of all new hires last year in teaching were uncertified across the state. They're just, the bodies aren't there. And so people are also pushing for teacher retention strategies, teacher grants for teachers to become teachers. There's, TEA has a commission looking into that, and it sounds like some of their solutions are good ideas. We'll just see what happens. There was a really fun session about meeting structure, public records, and board processes. So I gave you all the slides on that, about organizing when our public agenda forum can be, whether it's on the agenda items or not, when people sign up to speak, structuring timelines for grievance hearings. It was just kind of a fun facts of how to be better public relations managers of hot topic items that happen in our communities. So the big point was, open forum is a vehicle to talk to the board, not at the board publicly. I thought that was nice. And then, actually, my favorite session was about behavioral management for, as a system for schools. So this is these last two slides. These are all the fun theories going around that teachers or schools can use, and this is just a few of them. I mean, it's a mess. You pick one and you try that strategy for a while, or this one, and getting everyone to agree is quite difficult. This group called Emergent Tree Education was started by teachers based on the science of behavior change or behavior teaching. And they work with a school district, and I've talked to Donna and to Mr. Brown, Ms. Hale, about this, and they're going to look into it because they are the education professionals and they'll know if this is a good fit for our district. But if this is what it sounds like, it's like curriculum alignment for behavior. It gives you a system, everybody reacts the same to the same behavior, and it's not just for extreme behaviors. It's for kids that don't have their supplies, they don't get ready in the morning, they can't sit still because these kids aren't being taught this anymore at home. You say, sit still and be quiet, or sit still and behave, and they don't really grasp what you want, because they've never been shown at home. So this is a big cultural problem, that this is a process that it seems they are developing and they come and develop with you, that will help address that. So K through 12, your teachers expect the same thing, when they say the same thing, with the same prompt, and everyone is standardized all the way through. So that was hopefully something we can help with teacher retention. It will help with our uncertified teachers, with classroom management, lots of things. So there is a lot of growth in this area, so if this isn't the thing, hopefully there are some more tools our teachers come in. Namely, we need more money and everybody agrees.
I understand you say Tasby is in favor of more local control?
Very, very much so. Everybody was stamping and going fist about it. We'll fight with each other later, but right now, we just don't want the state telling us what to do.
Okay.
They can fight amongst each other later. Right now, everyone said, let us fight amongst each other.
It's just a surprising statement.
No, it was really good. And they did really, they started going into child welfare and things like that. And they're like, that is not our job. We don't have the budget for that, the immigrant problem, and we educate those kids, but we can't house them, we can't. It was really good, everybody stayed focused. It was fascinating. There was one, there's a charter school rep in there though, and he got drug through the bud. Poor guy. But it was good. It was, and Region 16 goes and keeps everything kind of logical. When things get a little wild, one of our group that are more seasoned tend to stand up and go, okay, we're done, moving on. And that, so it is important that our region is represented, I mean.
The more common sense of the panhandle that can be inserted in those conversations, I think the better.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Captain's report. What are we in today? Let's start at Lady Martin.
Hey, guys.
Howdy.
I don't have anything to add. Do y'all have any questions?
Everything good?
Everything's good.
Life is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perryton High School.
So just to add to what Mr. Brown said earlier, fans did an absolutely fantastic job on Saturday night, and their area contest is going to be in Amarillo again on November 2nd. So if any of you have the opportunity to go, they really would appreciate the support and you'll be impressed. They do a really good job.
It's in Amarillo this year?
It's in Amarillo, Dick Vivens again.
Okay.
So November 2nd. Once I have the time, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Nothing new to add?
I think I'd put it in there, but I just want to say it out loud, our junior high boys are district cross-country champions by a lot. So they had 37 points, and the next closest school was Canyon with 69. Maybe it was 39 and 67.
For the second year in a row.
Or the second year in a row.
That is great.
So they were phenomenal. It was so exciting to see, so.
And that's not just our district. That's, I mean, that includes, that's a panhandle wide.
Multiple, yes.
Yeah. It's not just our eight schools. It's a big, it's a big deal.
And our girls were fourth. I mean, we really, really showed up. It was fantastic, fantastic to see. And they've been fun to watch all season. I mean, I'll just be honest, our boys are undefeated, so they've been fun to watch all season long. Lots of great stuff. Our girls swept River Road in volleyball last week, so they won every set but one. So we've just got lots of good things going on. And instructionally, we're doing well, too. So just across the board, good things. So, questions?
I see coming up on Ivan's report, y'all are going to make the switch over to fiber just over Christmas break. Everything's working well with what you've got now?
Yes, yes, we're back online. Everything's been working well. No one's reported connectivity issues or lags or anything of the sort. So we kind of talked about dates of when we wanted to make the switch and when it would be feasible for us to be down for a day or two during that nine-to-five period that PTCI would come in. And we kind of decided, we don't know what we're missing yet, so let's just keep rolling with what we're rolling with, because we're all getting along and doing real well right now. So we'll be excited to make the change, but I don't want to ask my teachers to go down and make alternate plans, especially right now, right before benchmarks. We've been setting dates for benchmark tests and setting goals for fall, spring, and the end of year, and I don't want to ask them to go without for a couple of days, you know, just for speed. Now, we're looking forward to that speed, but I didn't want to do that. So we made plans to do it over holidays so that...
Good choice. Makes perfect sense.
Like I said, we don't know what we're missing until we get it. Any other questions?
Anything broke, don't fix it.
That's exactly right.
A minute.
That's exactly right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cates?
Mr. Cates has had an emergency at his farm, and I think Jody is stepping in for him. Is that right?
Yes.
So Jody is going to come to the mic and tell us it's all good at Williams.
Exactly. Those were my instructions, it's all great at Williams. But I do want to just give a shout out really to Mr. Cates and the staff at Williams, because since we gave the whole third grade hall to construction, we have not a single space in our building that can put another box, that can do anything like that. And they have been so accommodating when we need a little meeting space or we need something. And so I really appreciate that they are letting us really, they're being great neighbors to our campus, and it's so great to work with Mr. Cates and all of his staff as they accommodate us through this transition period. So I just want them to get credit for that, for sure. At Wright, we have had many parent events over the last month, and it is always so great to have parents in the building and get to experience, you know, just, they get to experience the excitement of school through their students' eyes. And so we've had several things, and it's been lots of fun with our one-school-one-book. Things are just going great. And I know teachers are excited about the new rooms, but the day we took down the temporary wall and the first grader saw the other side, they were oohing and aahing and clapping, they'd never seen down that hall before. So even the kids are super excited to have the opportunity to be in a building that looks so new and exciting. So that was, I was like, what are they cheering about? And I looked down and they're all just so amazed about what's been happening down there. So it was very cute. So yes. Do y'all have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Kinder?
Hi.
Howdy.
How are you guys tonight? Good. So we started, our Super Troopers were waiting on our T-shirts. So the next boarding, board meeting, I will have a picture of our Super Troopers for the next couple, six weeks. We also started our picnic with parents this week. The first day went well. Last year, we just had the whole building come, and it was a lot of people in one room. So this year, we decided we're going to kind of split it up with every day. And so that's gone well. And we had a few criers, because when parents come to the building and they're still four and five years old, they don't understand why they can't go home with mom and dad. So we just kind of helped them back into the classroom, and they had a great rest of the day. So do you guys have any questions for me?
Do you still have kids leading like the pledges and doing positive office referrals?
We do, yes. We have positive office referrals, and we do announcements in the mornings, but we do it in the cafeteria. So I was wanting to start having the kids come up and do the pledges with me, because I bought a little microphone.
Okay.
And a little speaker, and the kids just think that the people that have the microphone are rock stars, you know?
Yeah.
So I want them to be a rock star, too. Yes.
I just hadn't seen it on Facebook, so I was hoping that was true.
Yes.
Because that was something I know that their classmates don't...
Yes, so we're going to start doing that, hopefully after Christmas break. I'm giving them some time to practice that in their classrooms, and hopefully we can start implementing that during morning announcements again. So, yes, thank you guys so much.
Thanks. Director's report, Mr. Kemp.
I don't think I have much to add. If y'all have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Have you noticed the tree over at Williams, when people pick up, pull into traffic on 19th, that tree is getting where you like can't see the traffic coming on 19th?
On 19th?
Yeah. Where Williams pulls in, am I saying the right building?
Yeah.
Yeah, Williams pulls out where those teachers, or teachers, sorry. Those parents are pulling into 19th. I've just seen a couple of like near misses there, and I know it's not technically our fault, but those pine trees are getting wide enough that it's hard to see. So I don't know if that's something, when y'all aren't mowing, just add to the, someone look at that knows more about trees.
They actually belong to the city.
The city owns the trees?
That's their right of way.
Something I have to go out there and do that in the dark. Never mind, I didn't say anything.
Yeah.
I did not say anything.
With Mr. Kemp, there might be a tree there one day and not there the next.
He is magic.
The wind does blow.
Yeah, it does. It must have blown it there.
I'm with the whole tree on, just, you know.
That tree must be inspiring.
Car window height. Have a great night.
On that note, thank you very much. Communications and safety. Dynamic duo.
We just had our first day of the audit that's mentioned, and we'll have a full list of findings and everything tomorrow. So that we're to maybe in the board next month, and...
And your past?
We, I will say, we've got a pretty good auditor to come up. She was a former administrator and works well with us, asks the right questions, and I think we did fairly well. There's going to be, we're going to find some things we have to do with. You're not going to, probably, TA's not going to come up here and not find something probably, but I think overall, we were in pretty good shape.
Anything else, other questions? Thank you very much. Ivan, what do we have on IT? I stole a little bit of your thunder already.
Hello?
Good day. I already stole some of your thunder on the junior high, I'm sorry.
Everything seems to be going well, and I don't really have anything else to add to my report.
So since the junior high has decided that they're not going to make the switch over the fiber yet, and they're going to just, they don't know what they don't know from a speed standpoint, can we just send them articles talking about broadband speed? can we just send them articles talking about broadband speed and fiber speed and say, man, 500 meg's is awesome?
Right. I, I do understand.
Makes perfect sense. That makes perfect sense to do that, to not, not break everything in the middle.
There's no way to run those side by side, is there Ivan?
No, because I have to configure the routing and all that. So once I do that, I have to.
It'll be seamless.
Absolutely.
So I was asking if they could run side by side for a minute and make sure.
We do have, there, there is a guy at Region 16 that's running simulation, isn't he? Just to check on things.
Yes, that, that is for our internet connection.
Yeah. Yeah. They're test, they're testing it before they load things up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Food service, Ms. Walker.
Everything's going good and I don't know that I have anything to add in.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Transportation, Mr. Felix.
We were taking bets on who's gonna be me or Coach Hernandez.
You guys can pay Lilian or whatever I get these things.
Nothing to add on my report? If y'all have any questions on that?
When I was down at San Antonio, they did have Huntsville down there that re-does buses for about a third of what it costs to buy a new one. But I don't know about all the, totally redoing it mechanically or the electrical wiring and all that. But then they don't have the RFS on them. You redo an old one, it's a thought, but that is another option.
We've looked at that before down Huntsville. They used to send them down there.
Yeah, it was closed during COVID, but they are up and running again. I saw them over there, it was like, hey!
That, that would be one bus that doesn't have all the.
Yeah, all the stuff on it, but it was just a.
Where are we at on our conversation with Frank Phillips on, you know, we get decent mechanics class to be working?
We're still in the works, trying to figure out what they can do, how they can help us, different things that they may be able to help with. They have already fixed one bus, our small white sixteen-passenger air conditioner issues. And they were able to get that, we were able to order parts, they have it going and it's back in the fleet now. Luckily, we haven't needed it. But it's, that's one that, that's a success story already.
I would like to just take a moment and highlight Mr. Felix and Mrs. Lacston. They've been having conversations together for a little while now. And it's, it's very much a win-win situation that they've worked out. Of course, they're students, so they can't fix every problem. But there are some problems that their students need practice on and we can use the extra, extra help freeing up our mechanic to work on other things. And so they, they've worked on a kind of a case-by-case basis that we can take some of our vehicles over there and the, the mechanics class can have practice fixing them. And it, it just, it's, it's definitely a win-win. We get the service, they get the practice. I just, I think it's, it's a great partnership right now. And I think it's something we can develop even a little more robust in the future. But it took some willingness on our side, on Mr. Felix's side and on Mrs. Lacston's side. And that's, that kind of work together is the kind of thing a community always needs.
Yes, and a lot of what they can help us with depends on what they're working on in class. So we just happen to be lucky enough that part of the stuff they were going over were, was the HVAC stuff and they were able to literally within a few hours diagnose it. Here's what we need. Jeff was able to order the parts and got the parts in and got it done. So we're still in communication. In fact, I talked with, texted with Rick Holsey today about kind of the next step and what, what else can we, what can we get going and, and some other things? So I think it'll be, it'll be good. There's a, there's a lot I think that they can help us with, but it, there's, there are just so many parts to it that how, how and where and it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be good, but it's, it's gonna take a little bit of time to, to see.
Have we made any decision or any progress on that one bus that's been sitting for several years there on the south side?
It's still the same. He hasn't, Jeff hasn't had a chance to work on it that I know of.
At, at what point in time in administering the transportation department, do you just say, what's it worth? Get it going? And utilize those dollars in purchases of other transportation?
Right. That's, that's a bus that has been down for so long, I honestly don't know much about it. I know that when Jeff started on, it had several issues and it was, I'm gonna throw out a number. It was throwing like thirty codes, fifty codes. And it's down, he's, he's been able to work on it as, as he can. It's just not fully functional yet. I, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. I would like to be, that would be an example of something that if the college could help us with.
True.
Things like that. It's a low mileage bus. It's, from what I know, it's a decent bus.
Also has value, but it has zero if it's not doing anything.
One hundred percent, yes, sir.
Well, even if we have to take it somewhere to get fixed.
Yes.
It may be done.
And, and I don't know if that means.
Tires are gonna rot off of it.
To take it to Amarillo, take it to Lubbock, how do we get it there? You know, I, I don't, honestly, I don't have that answer. But I, that crosses my mind. I have, I have a list, an ongoing list of, of things to, to check on. I can tell you that Jeff is optimistic about it because he has it narrowed down. He's been working on it over the past couple of years that he's worked there. So it's, it's getting closer. Is that close a month, two months, two years? I don't, I don't have that answer. Good question, Tom.
Anything else?
On this, I'm guessing mainly the small van requests. But how many requests are for just like one or two people?
A bunch.
Less than four?
A bunch, yes. We, we have a lot of administrator requests, just teachers going to Region 16. We have administrators going to sports events all the time. One, one passenger, two passenger. Mr. Brown travels a lot by himself and it's a, it's a lot. It's usually one to two or it jumps to four to six and then it jumps to twelve. Just kind of, it really depends. But we, we do have a lot of singles, doubles.
Same time usually?
Uh.
Kind of spread out or kind of hidden?
No, all the time. I mean, I would say two or three a week. Just because of, of sporting events and, and everything.
Sporting events and trips to Amarillo, I'd say.
Yes.
Region sixteen or trainings, things like that.
For sure.
Two main draws and smaller draws.
For sure.
Ever looked at paying mileage instead of buses, instead of vehicles?
As far as I know, the rule has always been.
Has to take a.
Take a.
liability purpose.
Take a, take your own vehicle, or I'm sorry, take a school vehicle if it's available. But let's say we run out, then if somebody takes their own vehicle, they can, they can get mileage for that. As far as I know, that doesn't happen very often.
Okay.
And mileage is, pay mileage Amarillo would be, I mean, it's fifty-five cents a mile. And if you have them all, with all the trips we're doing. Cost.
Sixty-seven and then.
Yeah, sixty, yeah. Yeah, so with all the trips we're doing, it would probably get very expensive.
Yeah.
I think it's still an option, but I, I've, I've never, at sixty-seven cents a mile, we could run the numbers. I would guess that paying mileage would be more with all the trips we're doing.
Yes.
It's just my guess, right?
We should need an airplane. I know.
Anything else?
Do you want me to go over any of the bus stuff that we sent out? Is that last week?
Yeah, did you, I, I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at some of the bus lease and purchase information? Y'all have any thoughts or questions on that? It was in the, the larger email that I sent. It was a, it was a click, a click. Sorry, it was in there, right? You could get to it, right? Okay.
I missed that one, sorry y'all.
Has he told you the availability of those buses? What he would have possibly available if we were wanting to move forward and do something?
The yellow buses, I believe, there's gonna be some in.
November?
The, the big Ranger buses. Oh gosh, it's all running together now. I want to say he has some in, but I can't remember if he has more coming in. And then the, let's call it the fancy yellow dog. Those I think are more, I think they have them in, but they're, they have to be customized and all that. Yes, I do know like on the yellow buses, they ordered eight and I believe four spoken for. So those, those are, once those disappear, I don't, I'm not sure when the next group comes in.
What is the average time to pay off a bus versus leasing it? Like what do you normally, what's the term on a bus? Whatever we set at, whatever we want?
I have no clue. We, we have not purchased a bus since I've been here.
Most time.
You're not an individual payout.
It's just a. Usually it's cash.
Single payment.
Okay. That would make more sense.
One thing that intrigues me with the leasing is that if, as, as we look at our, our fleet of buses, our activity buses, our yellow activity buses, our route buses, if, if we look at buying one bus, it doesn't hardly get us anywhere. So a possible lease where we could buy multiple buses and pay them out over a couple of years, few years, seven years, that's, that's the lease to own option that they, that they offer. It would give us a chance to up our fleet a little bit. You know, one thing that when we look at our buses is if we get an activity bus, are we gonna get rid of a bus or are we gonna add one? Those are all decisions that we have to make. Our, our yellow buses, you know, one of our activity buses now has over, over a hundred thousand, which isn't, it's not a, not a big number. But when you think about that bus then going into a route bus, once that time comes, it already has some miles on it. Two of our route buses have over two hundred thousand on them. And Jeff was telling me the other day that they're showing signs of, of turbo issues. And turbos are about ten thousand dollars when we start looking at those. So could that be next month, next year, two years, five years? We don't know, but we have to, we have to have enough to, when that happens, to, to fill in. Which right now, we're okay. We have enough buses that if we have one break down, we can shove one in, not a big deal. But that comes out of our, out of our activity buses. So, and the same with our vans. Where our vans are, are getting up in mileage, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand. And we're having, we're having some that we don't want going out of town on long trips for sure. So we have to kind of space them out, you know, use those for the Spearman, the Pampas, the Borders, maybe Amarillo's. We hate to send them on, on long trips, but you know, our vans are aging as well. Fourteen-passenger van, you know, that thing has, has gotten used a bunch. The bad thing is you can't hardly find them right now. So we're, we're in need of, of several things. But we have, at some point, we're gonna have to, have to make a decision on what to purchase and.
I wanna rub real quick, but y'all don't even have a pickup you can work out of, do you?
We do not. The bus barn doesn't have a pickup. In fact, today, we had a flat on a bus. And as far as I know, Jeff loaded up in a van and took tools and went to see what he.
We need to get a pickup.
So we need a, we need a pickup.
We had a pickup, but I think it went away when all the board went.
All the board took that. They purchased it when they came in and, and kind of took over. And then when they, when they left, they took that pickup.
Run a maintenance shop, you don't have a pickup to work out of, I think.
Yes.
So something I think that should be a talk about priority was to get a pickup that we could definitely use and go get some things done or if you gotta boost a bus or, you know, change a tire, you need tools. I mean, we don't know of anybody that can work out of a van.
Yes, and, and especially with cold season.
I don't.
On the back, pick up, pick up tires too. Yeah.
Yeah. But even, you know, just, just jumping buses off in, in the cold. I mean, it's, it's frequent.
Yeah.
When it, especially when it gets super cold. I think last year when we had that long cold spell, there was a day where we had like five or six buses down. They just wouldn't, wouldn't go, they didn't have enough juice to, to go. So we were, we were getting them, just going down the line, jumping, jumping them on. So a pickup is, is very, very needed for the bus barn. And it doesn't have to be a fancy one, just a simple three-quarter ton, four-wheel drive. But it, it has to be able to pull, pull out of the mud and the snow and jump buses and haul tools.
Well, but if we don't have anything, we're working with a van, a like twenty-year-old basic, just something.
And I'm sure, so is there a dedicated van or are we just using it until it's to go somewhere for the teachers or something?
It's vans, yes.
So see, I mean, that's not any good either.
No, that's not good either. But I mean, if, instead of like investing a whole bunch in a big service vehicle and we also still need buses, we can get a get-by truck that, I mean, an old truck that they can go change tires. It would be nice for it to pull out, but I mean, what do we actually absolutely really need right now? We need something that can change tires, take some heart pieces and things like that. We, the wish list is obviously the better thing, but it would not, the vehicle market.
A pickup's a need.
A pickup is a need.
It was, it's a need.
It is a need. I'm not saying it's, it's not, but it doesn't have to be that, you know?
No, it doesn't have to be a King Ranch. No, it can be a, just a.
It can be a used, simple, reusable, durable.
Definitely. But it, it would be super nice.
Start with, start with.
Yeah. And something that's, that's usable.
Yes.
But in order to.
While we shop for this one, that has all the things with toolboxes.
Yeah, yeah, dependable.
Dependable, dependable, there's the word.
Sometimes older is more dependable.
Sometimes. Yeah.
But to be able to, it needs to be heavy enough, heavy, heavy duty enough to.
Yes, it does.
To serve the purpose and, yeah, that's, it doesn't have to be.
But right now, a van is serving that purpose, so.
A van is serving that purpose. Yes, and when, when we run out of vans, we unload everything and.
Got it.
The van's not gonna pull out straight for us.
No.
No, yeah, we need a, need a four-wheel drive, three-quarter ton, one ton.
Yes, that would be.
Something.
That would be.
Yeah.
But there's, there's a lot of things that, that we need. When we talk about Ranger buses, when we talk about activity buses, I stopped up Friday night and looked at the buses that Lubbock brought for their, for their van. And they were the, if y'all looking, if y'all don't know if y'all saw the packets or not, but the, the nice yellow dog buses that are, that's what they brought, the white yellow buses with storage. They had me come on, they're like, come on, come look at them. I got to see the air conditioning. I, I quizzed them about their air condition, it's more great. The overhead storage, they were twenty-eight passengers. They were kind of a smaller bus, but no, that's what, that's what they brought. And the drivers loved them, they said they rode good. They, you know, I don't hear any complaints on them. I check with people all the time and, and try to see different options, you know? From a Ranger bus, the flat-nose Ranger bus to the nicer yellow bus, the white bus. We want to call it the white bus. You're looking right at a hundred thousand dollars cheaper.
West Plains, we went and watched Scott and play a Pampa. And they just, they were just basic yellow dog buses and they had a rider truck that had all of the truck, the, the van equipment in it. There was no storage in that. It was just a normal Canyon fleet.
Lubbock still brought one too, a rider truck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do that instead of, instead of a pickup and trailer. Yeah, they do that instead of, instead of a pickup and trailer.
Yeah, granted, we don't have a rider rental place here, but there are other things too while we were working on our fleet that they, I mean, West Plains Canyon, I assume, wants to have a model figured out probably.
For sure. Yeah, they, you know, the, the yellow buses with, with air conditioning and.
Yeah.
You can, you can get them with the overhead storage. They don't recommend the bottom storage just because when they go to, to route buses, then you're, that's just something else to, to mess with, but that's, that's an option. Something to think about too, when we look at the activity buses is the 75 mile an hour compared to the 65 mile an hour. That makes a big difference when you go to Lubbock and Loveland and Erfurth and those, and those, those white, yeah, those white fancy yellow dog buses, I'll call them, they, they are governed at 75 instead of 65. So if it's yellow, it's 65. If it's white, it's 75. I know which one I don't wanna. Yes, sir. Yeah, it makes a difference.
It's like.
What are the questions we have?
We good? Good start.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Ms. Hudley, I didn't see any report in here, but I didn't know if you had anything to add.
To add to no report?
Yeah.
I do apologize for not getting a written report. We're just moving right along, staying caught up on our referrals, responding to TEA for all the hoops that we jump through. I'm getting in shape. I can hear all those hoops. So that's where we are. Questions?
How many kids are we testing right now?
I do not know. We're in the process of transferring from one system to a second one, and so they give me a report when we meet, and our next meeting is in.
But there's, is it kind of a normal, you feel like it's a normal flow, more than normal this year?
It's about the same than it's been for the last two, three years, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Ranger roundup. I haven't seen Desiree tonight.
I haven't seen Desiree. She's on here.
Okay, we will get to a multi-page AD report.
This is the longest AD I've ever seen.
Oh, good day, sir.
I don't have anything to add to what was already tied, but if you have questions.
Triple your win total. Growth, it shows growth.
Which one?
They grow, they show growth, volleyball and it's.
Questions, comments? With three pages, there aren't many questions.
Yeah, the coaches are doing a good job of typing their stuff up.
That's what I told you. I said, he didn't write all that.
I found a better way to get this up to you.
Report on your own sport.
That is called pristine management.
Yeah, yeah, they can put, they can say a lot more than I can.
Yeah, and you have a long drive on Friday.
Yeah, we're, we're at Loveland. Win and, and win, if we don't win, we're in trouble, big trouble, so. Yeah.
Then get us a winner.
Yeah. Yeah, we need one big time.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
I don't have anything to add. I don't have questions over here.
You're saying the trial's set for February 10th. Basically, instead of just going with the current system and dispersing the ratings, try and get out for an additional period.
Correct.
So now we'll be looking back almost two years. I mean.
Yeah.
Two years with a new.
Who cares at that point, right?
I mean.
No, I mean, we, we could have gone on with what we were doing and, and I don't know. This is, this is just amazing.
Be like me trying to underwrite a loan with 20, 21 tax returns, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah, hey. I have a deal for you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Sorry about the doc.
No, that's not it. And Angela's not here to be calling what his own.
Ready.
Okay, do you have any questions? It's a lot. Her job is a lot. That, that is a lot.
I mean, I just think the summary was good.
What, remember what the term emergent bilingual.
The new state DSA.
Because, I mean, it looks like about a third of our students are there.
Yes, sir. So EB's is the new English learners. Texas is the only state that actually calls them EB's, emergent bilinguals. They're just learning the language. So those are students that are learning dual language classes, which are pre-K or for.
Is that how they classify as EB's there in the dual language?
So if you remember, if you've been here, so EB is what used to be ELL, which is what used to be LET. It's the same.
You guys are really good at this stuff.
Same, wasn't me. Same, same student, different label.
Now, but just the number seems.
Yeah.
I, I thought I'd lost handle on.
About 10, yeah.
Thirty, thirty-year population is huge.
Yeah. It's 10% of the state roughly, what they were reporting.
Yes.
And that percentage is really what drove our PD. We had this hat last week, which I think part of our telepath and our pretty top rock really focused on our EB students, but also had good strategies for our dyslexic students, uh, poor students, and just others struggling learner. So when you look at our numbers, you look at our data, that's what taught us to want to do, bring in some specialized training for our EB students.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Ms. Lawrence?
I don't have much to add to this. Something that came out of our audit, like page 61, for example, where you see the accrued interest at the end of the year for the prior year's CDs, we're no longer going to accrue interest. I guess it's not the cool thing to do anymore.
Wait, so what, what do we do?
I'm sorry.
So what do they do?
Um, well.
Reinvest it in it now?
No, I'm, like, on the books. We just won't show. Yeah. It'll just look a little.
It's an accounting procedure change.
We had a wonderful audit, put it very mildly, really, really good audit.
Go ahead and tell us how great you are. I heard wonderful things on my phone.
Thank you.
So they were, and, yeah, yeah, in all seriousness, they, our auditors are, you know, hired by the board to, to look at the administration, look at the, the financial dealings of the district. And, and when, when I, I get a annual phone call, we go over the findings of the auditors, and they were exceedingly complimentary of you and your staff.
Yeah, everybody did an awesome job. We only had to make one adjusting entry.
No way.
Yes, way. That's awesome.
You should frame that, like.
I'll frame it when it's blank.
That's epic.
And so we ended at 1,070,000, just right under that for what we added to fund balance, which now brings fund balance to a little over 5 million. And.
How many months is that?
I'm sorry.
How many months is that?
Uh, we're right, like, I calculated it before, five months.
Close enough, close enough.
Okay.
Good enough.
That's all.
Other questions? Comments of any sort?
Y'all awesome.
Going twice.
Great.
Board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on our agenda as allowed by Texas government code. Personnel matters, section 551.074, security devices, 551.076. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting, and it's now considerably later time than the last time I looked. Seven o'clock, straight up.